Call our regular city commission meeting in order and budget hearing, please rise. Communication, all my flagellations to the flag of our country. Commissioner, minute.
Dear Holy Father, thank you for today. Thank you for all your many blessings. Please watch over us as we make decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens. Give us wisdom more and understanding. Thank you for our staff that work so hard, Lord. We appreciate them and our first responders. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our flagellations to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all here this evening. First is our budget hearing. We will have the second reading of a hearing to adopt the proposed budget and mileage rate for fiscal year 2021 and 22. Ordinance 21-29.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 21-29 and ordinance levying tax upon all taxable property within the city of Winter Garden, Florida for the tax year beginning on October 1, 2021 and ending on September 30, 2022. City Commission of the city of Winter Garden hereby adopts, establishes and levies a mileage rate for ad valorem taxation of real and tangible personal property within the city of Winter Garden for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending on September 30, 2022 at the rate of 4.5000 mils. That's $4.50 for every $1,000 of assessed valuation upon the assessed valuation of property within the corporate limits of the city of Winter Garden, Florida. This mileage rate is greater than the rollback rate of 4.3281 mils by 3.97%. Do you want me to go ahead and read the other ordinances and open them all at the same time?
No, 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 that would be good. Yes.
Ordinance 21-30 and ordinance appropriating and allocating all revenue and funds of the city of Winter Garden, Florida for the tax year beginning on October 1, 2021 and ending on September 30, 2022, whereas it is anticipated that there will be available for use and dispersment from the general funds of the city with revenue in the following amounts: collection of ad valorem in the amount of $19,39,702; revenue other than ad valorem in the amount of $26,748,570 for total revenues available for expenditures of $45,788,272. And ordinance 21-31 and ordinance appropriating and allocating all revenue and funds of the community redevelopment agency, the CRA, of the city of Winter Garden, Florida for this tax, for the tax year beginning on October 1, 2021 and ending on September 30, 2022, whereas it is anticipated that there will be available for use and dispersment from the CRA funds of the city revenue in the amount of the following amounts: collection of ad valorem in the amount of $937,648; revenue other than ad valorem in the amount of $949,565 for total revenues available for expenditures of $1,887,213. And ordinance 21-32 and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Winter Garden authorizing the appropriation of city funds for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 in accordance with Article 3, Section 30, Subsection 5 of the city charter of the city of Winter Garden, Florida and Florida Statute 166.241 for the purpose of fulfilling the financial obligations of the city.
Hey, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we've already done one presentation, which we have here if you'd like to see it again. If not, I'd like to just go over a few items that we have not covered up to date in the previous two meetings.
Okay.
First of all, as you know, Chris Mueller submitted some questions and you submitted comments. Most of them have been answered. For a lot of these questions with Christian Mueller, it's obviously types united to discuss, but they were more for general comments and such.
Thanks, sir.
But a couple of items that I'd like to point out, as we discussed at the last meeting, the Spain and Neuter, we have adjusted it. It's not in your document ship and in the adopted, there will be the 50,000. It's probably more money we need, but we have 50,000 in there. What we'll do is subsequent to this, go out there, find a program and figure out how to do it, but it is holding in the adopted budget. We have also put in there, because one of the items on there is, as you know, we've discussed, well, the plans that I think this board has decided to go forward in the very near future, the Parks and Recreation Committee. And one of the things that is critical for this committee that we didn't look at is, is they need some good data and information as they move forward to do this process, because you could have a committee of five, 10, seven, how many people, but they won't have the raw data where all the residents want. What most communities have done, done in the past, is you create a, you do a survey with other types of devices and even the community, get input from the community. That way, when this committee meets, they will have a lot of community input going forward on the decisions. In the very near future, the city's going to be spending a significant amount of money on parks and recreations. You know, we based our city on quality of life and parks and recreations are what differentiate you from communities. So you have a lot of people with ideas chasing limited dollars, and that's probably the best way to move forward. So we put a place marker in there. We don't know the number yet. We set aside $40,000 funding for both any assistance this committee would need and to do a study to prepare them for this. We also had that budget. Those funds will come out of is we have overestimated the cost of health insurance in the general fund, so we'll reduce that. You'll see that in your adopted budget. And that reduction of those funds will both finance the Parks and Rec Study in Money and the Spain and Neuter Program. A few other items, you know, there's some other items in there that I've discussed, issues with, you know, looking at homeless issues going forward in the future, the staff, and I know, I think some of the elected officials in Matthews Hope and the Hope Center and many groups, I know going forward, we're going to be looking at programs with that. We would suggest bringing that back at some other time. As you know, with this board, they can approve anything and then make those adjustments, make recommendations and adjust the budget at interim. So all those things are easy to adjust with this board. And also looking at the potential of expanding our gold card communities, where gold can be experimental sage on Plant Street to see how that works. If indeed this commission decides to expand it, you can also make those decisions at the date in the future and just take those funds and pro, and set aside the interim budget, include those funds in that to make the adjustments as needed. If you need site, add more gold card paths.
Do you know what the final cost was in Plant Street out here, breaking?
I believe it was a little over $30,000 to do that. All right, we'll tell you, just give you a quick update since you brought it up. It's not working as well as we thought with the breaking because it's, so we found a good example online of traffic comments. We're going to bring it back to this commission where adjacent to where the breaking part is, you put like a little, almost like a little fence gate thing. It's on the side of the road. It looks very classy. We'll show you the pictures. And that tends to get people's attention better, because what we're seeing is, a lot of people are actually speeding through there inadvertently. So the goal is to find some way to make it more obvious if you need to slow down and reach those points. I know I drive it all the time. It's very easy to forget, especially when you've been driving that road for 25 years.
We do have three 25 mile an hour signs up there.
Yeah. And what we found is, is people don't pay attention to speed.
No, they ignore it. They know it's there.
And one last item is, we're going to bring back, we'd like to bring back interim budget. We've been discussing this. As you know, are probably the biggest issue we hear about the city of Winter Garden now, I know the sheriff's discussed is the biggest issue going on in the county, is people tend not to follow traffic rules anymore, especially speeding. So it's our biggest issue we hear all over the place of people speeding. So we're going to probably want to bring back, add two new police officers in interim budget that are going to be specifically traffic officers and motor officers. A lot of the officers don't like this duty. It's not the most pleasant duty. You're always going out there ruining people's days. So we will create a program to get more traffic officers on board so we can up our traffic controls throughout the city. And we would hire people specifically to do that type of work. And we
Bob Brown comes to mind.
We actually found out Bob Brown has two children and we've actually started recruiting them. Not really. But, so we want to bring that back at interim, but we'd like if this commission agrees, probably start looking for them right away, because traffic, as I said, is our number one concern. I'm sure all of you have heard it, you're constituents.
Yep.
We want someone that's passionate like Bob Brown is what I think.
Brown, why is it too much?
I would just interject, not quite that passionate.
Okay.
And that is it.
Okay. Any other questions from this commission? This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak concerning our budget. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 21-29, 21-30, 21-31, and 21-32 for fiscal year 2021, 22.
Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Just to make sure, make sure you asked a public comment on this.
I did.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, fine, thank you.
No, well, there wasn't. We told them. No, we asked it. Nobody came forward.
Thank you, sorry.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments up here? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? This motion carried unanimously. Next, our regular meeting, approval of amendments for our regular meeting is September 15th. You have them? Is there any additions, additions or corrections? Hearing none, we need a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Now we'll go to those ordinances. The ordinance 21-19 and 21-20.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 21-19 and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amendment to future land use after the Winter Garden Conferents, a plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately 0.28 plus minus acres located at 35 and 41 West Morgan Street, west of Broad Street, east of Island Road, north of West Morgan Street, and south of Broad Street from low density residential to commercial providing for separability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance 21-20 and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida rezoning certain real property generally described as approximately 1.11 plus minus acres of land generally located at 35 and 41 West Morgan Street and 965, 981, 995 Island Road on the northeast corner of Island Road and West Morgan Street from C-2 arterial commercial district and R-2 residential district to PCD planned commercial development as set forth in this ordinance, providing for certain PCD requirements and describing the development as the Morgan Street office retail complex and providing for separability conflicts and effective date.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Evening, mayor commissioners. This is a request to amend the future land use designation on 35 and 41 West Morgan Street from low density residential to commercial and to rezone a 1.11 acre site that consists of 35 and 41 West Morgan Street as well as 965, 981, and 995 Island Road to planned commercial development. The proposed development consists of a single story, approximately 9,000 square foot office retail building with associated site improvements including parking, landscaping, and a pond. Staff would recommend approval. You have to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Just wondering, are we still on to that fence on Morgan Street or we get rid of that?
That's still in there.
All right.
It's gay.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 21-19 and ordinance 21-20.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Parking approval between the city of Winter Garden and Winter Garden Firefighters.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I agree tonight. Before you this evening is a proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city of Winter Garden and the International Association of Firefighters Local 4947 for the period of October 1, 2021, September 30, 2024. The IIF presented the proposed contract to their members and it was unanimously approved by those voting 36 to 0. The third page of your agenda item, if you can turn to that, provides some other information about some of the items they wish to negotiate. The union had already agreed to the general wage adjustments the city manager proposed in fiscal year 2022 budget and the other changes ensures the city's pay and benefits remain in the upper mid levels of the surrounding jurisdictions. As you can see underneath wage and benefits, the paramedic preceptor program, the incentive was from a dollar to $1.75, and that was the paramedic preceptors, the ones who actually train the paramedics while they're at work. The tower truck incentive was 35 cents an hour new item, and it's because it takes several classes and courses and a lot of work to approve, to get approved to run the tower truck. And then two additional annual leave days per year, survey based, were estimated to cost of the overtime. This is the only other item at any kind of dollar amount. Other changes with minimal or no cost impact is to extend the firefighter and police officer pension plan drop from three years to five years. As you can see, the first year cost of the contract is $89,259. The three-year contract cost is $273,152. The city manager and the negotiations management team want to recognize the IIF bargaining team led by the tenants Mike Gurney and Frank Chella with a cameo appearance by the tenant Arthur Vogler helped clarify some pension issues. Their team was respectful, professional, and cooperative throughout the entire process and represented the entire bargaining unit in the exemplary manner. So it's recommended the commission approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Winter Garden and the International Association of Firefighters Local 4947 for the period of October 1, 2021, September 30, 2024. Be happy to answer any questions.
And if I may interject, just I want to compliment both Frank, Cheryl, and our union members for his saying all that stuff. It is absolutely, the relationship between the city and the union is fantastic. It works out well in Tracy stories and other locations where it doesn't, but they do a great job and it's to be commendable for both the city brass and the union members.
Thank you, Mike. Also, I want to give kudos to Jason Scheider, who, who forwarded the union for so many years. He was the front man for them and did excellent jobs. Thank you.
I heard that it was tough negotiations, but everybody did it in a responsible manner.
Yes.
We do appreciate it and we do thank you.
And I'll say, we always do here.
Yeah. Saying, we appreciate it and thank you. So questions from this commission?
It makes it pretty easy for a unanimous vote on our end, mayor.
Are there any questions?
Just appreciation to the city manager and everyone for, again, working so well with the union to make this happen. So thank everyone. Great job.
So we need a motion.
So move to accept the collective bargaining agreement for the city of Winter Garden and Professional Firefighters International 4947.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve the group's field back we approved about civil engineering and professional services. Yes, sir.
The mayor commissioners, this is a proposal for civil engineering and professional services related to the development of the Tucker Ranch Walrus Park. Elements of the proposal include services for utility infrastructure, soil analysis, stormwater permitting, roadway design and construction administration. Staff would recommend approving group of technical group to provide civil engineering and professional services for Tucker Ranch in a not to exceed amount of $345,590. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Did time to be able to complete the work factor into picking them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Will you satisfy the timeline, your dear?
Yes.
Will you satisfy the timeline, your dear?
Yes.
And as the city manager understand, the paving is minimal for the city area to keep it as natural as possible.
The purpose to preserve the area that Mike really likes, you drive.
Well, we could just have to dig it out, too.
He gets stuck one time.
Now we're going to get it.
Harold, you can hit that rope that you climb and pull him out. Come down and get out. Keep regular.
All right, any questions? We need a motion.
Motion to approve group of, we approve $345,590 for the Tucker Walrus Park.
Okay, we have a second.
A second?
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve agreement of acquisition of Rodway for Dillard Street and Lakeview Investment. Yes, sir.
Mayor commissioners, pleasure to be here. We have before you a proposed contract that we're asking the commission to approve and authorize the city manager to sign. It's for a piece of property at the northeast corner of Dillard and Plant owned by the Adsons Lakeview Investments. As you know, that's one of the most visible and high value properties that we have in the city. We're only acquiring 4,106 feet for total plus of $210,000. It seems like quite a bit, but it's not all land value. There are damages created by this project that require us to reimburse them for those damages. And when you add all that up, it becomes a very large home for a small amount of property. There are properties downtown that have gone for over $50 a square foot for land. They're about half that price with this proposal if you take out what we're paying for the, for the damages that the taking causes. If you look at the maps, it's a very odd shaped piece of property and we're making a much more unusual shaped parcel. And that causes a great deal of cost for them to develop the property after we put in that around the bell. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And if I can, because the mayor asked me about specifically, the road is not affected at all there, the mayor.
Okay, North Plant Street, you'll be able to?
No. And the, the property owners have talked with us about possibly relocating that road when they redevelop the property. That is something I think we will be interested in, because at that location, it is going to interfere with the intersection.
Because you'd be surprised.
But there are a lot of people we have to make happy with that relocation.
Because you'd be surprised how many people take that road when school is either in session or getting out of session and you got cars, you know, all the way down Dillard Street.
But if there is a way to relocate it, it should make everybody happy.
Yeah.
We would pursue that.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Then we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agreement for acquisition of rideaway for Dillard Street from Lakeview Investment LLC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that, sir. And good to see you.
Should be noted that Ed's work, been very tenacious on these right away issues. So good job. He's our, he's our guy.
Recommendation to approve a special event. Yes, sir.
It's a special event request for Wheelworks to hold their, I believe it's their 11th annual Think Peak Bicycle Ride on Saturday, October 9, 2021. That includes closing North Boyd from West Plant Street back to the northern, to the southern side of the entrance into the parking lot. The area will be used for the start and finish of the race and will be closed from 6:00 AM until 4:00 PM. We'll also be using the basketball court at the Methodist Church. We will have vendors, registration, food, beer, and prizes. Staff would recommend approval of the event. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
What is the race route?
I'm sorry.
What's the race route?
There are three races. There's a 10 mile and a 30 mile, both of which go out on the trail. And then there's a 62 mile which goes out on Plant Street, Oakwood Avenue.
Is that the one you're just running yourself?
I'll take my lane through the mic on that one.
So that is on the street.
I think there's any less riders on that one. Any other questions? We need a motion.
To make a motion to approve breast cancer awareness race.
Do we have a, we have a second?
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Board appointments for general employees pension board, city court.
Yes, sir. Mayor commissioners, a board appointment is required to fill an expiring term, a term, a two-year term ending September 30, 2021, which is tomorrow, for the general employees pension board trustee. This appointment replaces Matt Moore, who recently relocated. For your consideration, we had six board appointment interest applications that were included in the agenda packet. However, I did email each of the individuals and I just heard yesterday from Amanda Prophet that she has moved to Apoka. So staff would recommend approval of one appointment to the general pension, general employee pension board for a two-year term out of the applicants that we have on, unless you have a different desire.
Okay. Any recommendations from anyone?
I know Gretchen, so could recommend Gretchen.
Okay. Was that a motion? Or a comment?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Tote. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Need discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carried unanimously.
Any applicants in the audience?
Yes.
Amazing.
She's been coming to all the meetings. Along with the woman, Mr. K. Willingly, I'm sure. Matters from citizens of Winter Garden. Matters from our city attorney.
That is fair. Thank you.
From our city manager.
Yeah, a couple of items. First, I'd like to thank John and especially Jim, our city engineer. You know, we've been trying to find a solution to help metter Marion on Story Road. They finally found a solution that'll eliminate the need for the big stormwater bikes. That'll reduce her cost a significant amount. That was her big issue and they, that the engineer disagreed. So I think they've got that solved and that should reduce her cost somewhere close to $30,000. So that should help out quite a bit. Just a quick update on East Winter Garden. We're in contact with the county frequently, working on the CRA and on the annexation. It appears we maybe don't go from Fox Street at the same time. And so we feel very comfortable, we feel very good. We had a great chance to get the CRA approved. As we're doing this, we're also moving forward on our plans for the redesign of 10th and Center Street. Kelly is working on designing some buildings there. And our plan is, is to quickly, this fiscal year, to work on creating that commercial district at that intersection, which we call, we believe, the beginning of the, the really core part of the redevelopment of the community. And that's all moving forward. We feel very good about it. And that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Let's see. I want to thank Mike and Amy and the staff for working diligently and Ben, traffic consultants, for what they've been doing for me lately. I'm relieved of that, man.
Okay. Commissioner, what?
Just want to let everybody know about an event that's taking place in Lake Dorah. October 9, there's going to be a, the Phantom Airborne Brigade is going to be jumping into Lake Dorah. It's for good cause. They do it for wounded orders. I will be jumping. It's been 30 years since I've entered a canopy, so it should be interesting. They are also looking for volunteers for boaters to pick up jumpers in the lake. So if anybody wants to go to phantomairborne.us, they're, like I said, they take donations. It's for good cause. It should be a fun event, too, on Lake Dorah, October 9.
So as a pilot, do you actually jump out of your cockpit?
Oh, no. So you'll just text us and wait some answers.
Would you like one of our fire paramedics to be there?
Please.
We got it right here.
I had to talk to Aaron.
All right, good for you. Commissioner Mueller?
Just my appreciation to the city manager here and all the city staff for a great budget this year. They worked so hard. It was awesome. And taking the time to go through each, every part of that is just, just built to the level of professionalism of everybody on the city staff here. And then likewise, working with the fire department here, trying to union this, this flight. Everything went well there. So we're really just, it's going very well. We're looking forward to the return of all the events that are planned and there's a lot of excitement. Thank you for all those things.
Thank you. Commissioner, what?
I was going to say thank you to staff for all your hard work. Make our job so much easier. We really appreciate it. I'm always on the tail end, so I always feel like I'm saying ditto, but we do appreciate it.
We'll have the mayor mix it up, start down that next time.
Go back and forth. I go back and forth.
Sometimes it seems to be the same.
I guess probably tomorrow's been kicked off for 128 events and we'll have 20 down in January. Even is here, but I think tomorrow is the West Orange Homecoming Parade. So anybody had a chance to come out and watch that. Tuesday night is the William Grove dedication of the butterfly. Tuesday night is the William Grove dedication of the butterfly out here. So that'll be Tuesday night at five o'clock, starts?
I'm not sure.
Time, do you know, five o'clock, five to seven, I think, to the dedication of the butterfly. So.
You did.
Do I think, come out and join in those events? With that, we will adjourn our lecturing, the parade, and the commission.